I'd like to welcome our guests this evening. Please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this time I take a motion for the present agenda.
Motion.
Move, is there a second?
Second.
Moving second, any further discussion?
Who's the second?
Todd. Any further discussion? Falls in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'd like to invite our student rep up tonight. Rachel.
Vanessa Maraz, she had softball and she could not make it tonight.
Okay.
But, starting off, our boys' basketball had a great season this year. They were one, they were one short making it to state. Our girls' basketball, on the other hand, just finished the season last Friday night placing second in state. We're so proud of how hard they worked and what they achieved this year. Our track is kicking off with its first meet this Wednesday at Corvallis. Softball and baseball teams have just started the season and the girls play on Tuesday and our girls play on Wednesday, our boys play on Wednesday. Golf, our golf team has new members and several girls have joined. Our interact club had a daddy-daughter dance last Saturday night and it was a huge success. ASB has the Mr. SHS pageant coming up and they're getting the contestants ready with a car wash on Saturday for a fundraiser and you're welcome to come join. It's at Lynn Benton. The key club just elected students for the leadership positions. Our red cross club has their blood drive on May 31st. It will be the last blood drive of the school year. Our robotics club was in the bronze round for state and they got the champions last weekend. Our speech and debate, after this week's tournament, speech and debate had multiple members heading to state with, which is on the 20th through the 22nd at Western Oregon University. Our dance team is going to state this upcoming Thursday, so you're welcome to come support. That's it.
Thank you. Heard a lot of things, looks like we're marching towards the end of the school year, so it's kind of exciting.
Yeah, it is very exciting.
Yeah, I heard a lot of good things about the daddy-daughter dance.
Yes. It was a big turnout.
Yeah, a lot of, it was very positive for the community.
Yeah, it had a big turnout, it was amazing. Awesome.
All right, thank you.
Rachel, do you have, do you know the date for Mr. SHS?
I do not. I believe it's in April, possibly May, I'm not sure.
Okay.
We'll get on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. All right, moving to audience with visitors, I'd like to read a quick statement. Welcome to the regular business meeting of the Silver Falls School Board. We are glad you're here and welcome you to address the board at this time. Please be certain to sign in before you present. In order to ensure equity among speakers, the board will limit remarks to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wishes to appoint a representative to speak on its behalf, the board will extend the time for remarks to five minutes. A second audience with visitors will be occurred later in the agenda, specific to discussion and action items for this meeting. Would anybody like to, to address the board this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to discussion items. The first is the district policy committee recommendations for section C and D. Second reading, we've talked about it briefly in the last meeting, any other comments on that? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move that to a, an action item next meeting. And next one is the district policy committee sections E and F. Guys get a chance to read through that and you have any comments? No comments, great. Thanks. Okay, the Silver Falls 2013-14 per pupil spending calculation. Andy?
Actually, I'm gonna lean on, on you folks and Steve a little bit, but Tom had asked for some additional information on this, but each of you received a copy of a letter from Brian Reader, Assistant Superintendent with the Department of Education, specific to a, an error that occurred on the district report card, specific to per, per student, per pupil spending amount, I believe it was in the 13-14 school year. And that, that, that amount was a few thousand dollars off as a result of an error at the Department of Education. So, Tom, thanks for your efforts, you brought it up a few months ago with Steve's efforts, he looked into it. And Steve, you wanna comment on, anymore on, on what ODE said and what you discovered?
Yeah, the, they compared the three years, on, on each year's report card for per pupil spending and it did look obscure because it, we had a higher, higher, higher number in 13-14 and then it had dropped for, for 14-15 and 15-16. So, every district is required to send paper audits as well as electronic audits and budgets every year. And so they're, they go through a process to reconcile the paper audit and the electronic audit each year. And the electronic data had eight million dollars more of expenditures amongst all funds for, for Silver Falls than the actual paper audit did, and that's the number they were using in the calculation. There was just a, there was a, like a typo, I guess it was, in the electronic data and their reconciliation process didn't bring that to light, so, so that data has been corrected and therefore brought our per pupil expenditures down for 13-14, so the, so the, the, yeah, the path you would expect to see is, and I, and I would also note that, so on the 15-16 report card, since it comes out in the fall, after the year, after June 30th, 2016, they just use our, our budgeted numbers to come up with the per pupil amount, since our audits aren't done until the end of December. So, we will see the 15-16 number change come next fall when our 16-17 report card comes out and our 16-17 number will be based on, on the budget. So, that, that is the way it's supposed to work, so that's why it could be easy to, to kind of miss that, but, but it, it did stand out from the standpoint of, we went up to a higher number and came back down and that didn't really make sense.
Yeah, it, it, it had this impression of looking at it like, you know, there was money that should have been spent on students that was peeled away to be spent on something else.
Right.
That's, that's what it looked at, when I looked at it, so glad you could flesh that out.
So, Brian Reader is, he's a, I know you have a copy of this, but he's a pretty high up there at, at ODE and he was very apologetic and very responsive and we appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, it's good.
Thanks for, thanks for running down.
Did it happen to say if this has happened in the past?
With other districts?
With other districts.
Oh, I'm sure it has. You know, I, I, I wasn't, I wasn't here when that data was submitted, but the, the data looks like it was submitted correctly, I just don't know what happened in the reconciliation process on their end and, and they, you know, they, they accepted responsibility for that, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks to you both. All right, next is a declaration of candidacy for school board of directors and I guess we'll go down the line. Zone two, Erb?
Yes.
And zone four, Wally, myself, yes, I've already filed. And zone five, Aaron?
Yeah, yes, I've already filed.
Ms. Chairman, if I can chime in, one thing as well, I spoke with the association, Teachers' Association President tonight, Marie Trigger, and she said a tentative date for a candidate forum has been set for April 17th, it's a Monday, at seven o'clock at Silverton High School. This is very new information and Nancy Miller is the one who's orchestrating this, and I do emphasize tentative, it has not been finalized yet, but that's the date that they're giving serious consider, consideration to hosting the candidate forum and you will receive plenty of information when it becomes available.
Thank you. All right, administrator and staff reports, Andy, the school district enrollment study by Population Research Center in Portland.
Yeah, I have two, yeah, two important items to discuss with you. First of all, you as a board know, because we discussed this at a work session or two this year, but we have a, an enrollment study scheduled for mid-April. It'll take about two months to complete, it's being initiated and carried out by the Population Research Center at Portland State University. As you know, we've had lots of discussion, lots of energy put toward, toward our school district, specific to facilities, and I think with the, on growing population that we were experiencing within the city of Silverton and with the entire school district, I think it's appropriate time for us to administer this study. The last time this study was completed was approximately 20 years ago, maybe 18 years ago in there somewhere, and there was an interim study done by a different agency, I believe around 2003 or '04. So, we've had a couple of these in the past. Interestingly enough, when I looked into this with Portland State University, there are some school districts that do this routinely, especially, especially rapid-growing school districts. I don't know that we fit that definition, but, you know, 20 years for a full and thorough investigation of our enrollment, at least the best crystal ball attempt at looking at our future enrollment, I think is warranted and necessary right now. This will give you information to help you make some pretty important, well, at least assessments, if not actual decisions, over the course of the next year or two, maybe even three years, around the need for attendance boundary adjustments, around the need for, or, excuse me, additional planning related to facilities. I envision facility discussions and even a district-wide facility task force being something that I would encourage the board to consider over the next year, year and a half. This information will make a huge difference with that group and with you as a board to really make some determinations about where you want to go, going to want to go with facilities. I also think since transfer students have, or a number of transfer students that we have, it was on your consent agenda this evening actually, that it's a good time to evaluate what we anticipate to be anyway, the trend toward number of transfer students in this district over the next few years. You range from five to seven percent. This year it's about six percent and having some enrollment information will help you make, I think, some very good decisions and informed decisions about where, number of transfer students we need to accept into our school district over the, the next couple of years, largely based upon capacity, what you have available. Some schools are full right now, other schools are not, some schools have more flexibility than others when it comes to transfers. So, to wrap all that up, I think this, this study is timely and it will be very helpful information. I anticipate a report to the board in June, possibly July. And the second is the, the safe organs, the school safety tip line. This, this is, this is also very timely information and each one of you has a one-page summary, I won't read through that, you'll surely read it on your own, there's a few copies in the back for the public. But in 2015, there was a, an Oregon Task Force on School Safety, which was, gave a report to the legislature at the time, subsequently improved some legislation, and that legislation actually resulted in this statewide safety tip line. It's taken a couple of years to get it off the ground, it's fully funded, there are no funds from school districts specifically coming to support this, it's coming from a state-funded, a state-funded source. This database, excuse me, this tip line will allow anyone, any student in the state of Oregon, an easy-to-use electronic submission availability to share concerns, to share information about threats, about safety, about anything they may hear at school, not just at school, but even in the community. This tip line is up and running. Silver Falls School District is registered, but some school districts, according, and some schools, according to what we've heard from this, this, the tip line, some students are actually reporting information related to their own safety, whether it be in the community, something they heard a friend say, a friend maybe speaking of, hearing of a threat to others, maybe harm to self, maybe suicidal thoughts or tendency, things like that is what this tip line is in, is intended to support. Now, it doesn't rule out the fact that we have, I believe anyway, very good systems in place within our schools to also have this information reported and we've got an incredible staff who is responsive to the needs of, of kids in our schools as well. With that said, this does provide for some anonymity and from separation from people that a child may know or a student may know and not feel so comfortable with sharing that information. Once the tip is received, the administrator or the contact at the school or within the school district is notified, and then at that point, it's up to the school, the school district administrator, contact person, to decide what the most appropriate follow-through to that information. We actually have a full training by Jody Sherwood, who was the project manager of the school's safety tip line. It's a training for all principals in the school district on March 23rd. And while there's not a ton of training to this, I felt it very important for administrators to have firsthand information in the history of the program, how it's used, the processes for reporting information, and really having a good conversation about conformity to what we do as a district when we receive a tip through the school safety tip line. If a person were to use it now and they were to do a notification, it would come to me and it would come to Dandy Stevens. So, until we get each one of the principals up and running with this training on the 23rd, at that time, all schools will have a designated representative for the school safety tip line. Just wanted to make certain that it brought you up to speed. We will also have a messaging and communication process, a rollout with communication information shortly after all the principals are trained and will be notifying parents and students as well, and I'm hoping the media will pick up on this as well, or we'll report it to the media and maybe they'll publish something.
Andy, as you, as administrators, how do you handle if you get a tip and it turns out not to be, not to be a valid tip?
I think we handle it the same way we receive it except during the school day and we get those on occasion, things that may not be true or may not be entirely accurate or there's another side of the story to, but it does put us in a position, I think, to, to help address the needs of, of students, even if only a portion of the information is true, we definitely help with the situation, but it may also give us information or perspectives into the lives of a student, a life of a student that may help us better address that child's needs and.
Okay, I guess my question is, initially is it, is it investigated discreetly so you don't embarrass the student?
Yes, I mean, that's, that's our, that's how we operate, anyway, yeah.
Any other questions?
That's it.
All right. Steve, financial report.
Yeah, so the financial information in your packet is through February 28th. The general fund is still tracking run-on budget. We've currently received 76% of our budgeted current resources, 80% when you count our beginning fund balance being above forecast, that's right about where we should be. We have three more months of state school fund payments to come. So, so we're right on track revenue-wise. Expenditure-wise, we're also right on track. We've expended between 55 and 60% of our planned expenditure, expenditures. You can see it shows about 49% at the bottom, but that includes the reserves that we don't plan on spending. One interesting note is, if you look at the instructional expenditures, specifically, you can see we're right at 49.5% of expenditures. February, the end of February does mark exactly the halfway point for teacher, the teacher payroll year, six out of the 12 checks with six more to come, three in June, so you can see where, that's a good measure there to show that we're, we're right on track with, with the instructional expenditures, so thought I'd point that out. Schools and other funds are looking okay, with the exception of the food service fund, that, that, that's the, the fund in the report that's only through the end of January, I'm usually a month behind on that because there's, we're, usually by the time the board meeting comes, I'm waiting on the, our school lunch reimbursement calculation and reimbursement from the state, so it's a little easier to wait a month to get accurate figures for, for that particular month, so that's, I've been running that a month behind, but with all the snow days this year, I think that's added a additional challenge and we're still trying to, there'll still be another, I think next month we'll get a little better feel for how that shakes out because there are some adjustments to paychecks happening for days off and some other things that are still shaking out, but it, it has impacted sales with, you know, obviously a day, no school means no, no food being served, it also means that the cook didn't work, but on days where there's two-hour delays or early releases, you know, you have the labor there, but maybe not much lunch going on, that type of thing. So, it's still a little hard to, to know exactly what the impact of that is, so we'll just, you know, keep a close eye on it and see where we go from here, but. I also did have on budget, you know, we talked quite a bit at the work session two weeks ago about the budget, where the, where the state is and the process and that type of thing. I know Andy was at the Capitol today for OSBA and COSA Day and we haven't even had a chance to debrief and he might have a few comments on that, but really, we're still working with the same numbers that we talked about two weeks ago. Of course, this is the first time that I've seen, you know, the co-chair's number come in below the governor's budget number, so the governor's number was eight billion and the co-chair's number is 7.8. And right now, we're, we're basing our budget on the, on the eight. I, I think it's their goal to get there, at least. If we have to adjust, we will, but we, we hadn't, we had to make a decision to get information out to the schools and some preliminary allocations, and so the principals have had their allocations and budget worksheets for about a week now, and they'll be working on the budget process with their, with their staff through the month of March and be returning their, their, their work to me either before or right after spring break. And then the departments will be starting to work on their budgets here over the next week and into early April, so that's kind of where we're at right now and we're just gonna keep our ears closed and see what we find out. They just finished public hearings around the state to get public input, so now they're, they're kind of getting back to the grind, back in Salem, so.
Well, it's gonna be easier to add dollars back in and have to take more out, so I'm glad you're being conservative and we get good news.
Yeah.
That'll be good. Thanks, Steve.
I got a quick question for Steve. Do you remember last year at this time on our food services, where were we at this time last year? Do you remember?
No, not specifically for what would have been the end of February for food service in this case. I'm not sure, I'd have to check on that. I mean, we had a positive balance for sure because we had more, you know, money and, you know, there was more of a balance to start with, but I believe we were also had about, you know, more expenditures than we did revenue at that particular time as well.
All right, Jennifer Hannah?
Well, it is science adoption year for the state of Oregon and our K8 science staff is well underway in selecting a curriculum. They're piloting two different curriculums that they've narrowed it down to, both are approved by the state of Oregon, in fact, highly rated in the K8 category, so they will have a decision by May. They're running two live in several buildings with K8 students. The high school science staff has asked to do a postponement of that adoption and that is because there are new science standards, the next generation's science standards have just rolled out and they feel that the curriculums that are currently available have not caught up to that, so they would like to wait and see what comes out in the next year or two that better meet the NGSS requirements.
So, cut a question, the K8 science, the last time we did this, is it seven years ago?
Seven years, yeah.
There's a lot of work and web behind that and they, they had a lot of ambitious goals and I don't think it's been fully implemented across the district. Why don't we just stick with what we have and implement what we decided seven years ago?
You can if the standards don't change. Unfortunately, in this situation, the next generation's science standards are pretty significantly different than the old science standards. So, if the standards don't change much or the standards are still covered in the curriculum that you have currently adopted, you can continue an adoption. That's no problem, but this is a, quite a philosophical shift in how you teach science. So, instead of having a linear curriculum, like a life science, earth science, physical science, it's cross-cutting curricular concepts, so it's more skills and applications of skills that you would see in the science fields. It's kind of driven by industry, it's, it looks a lot like the STEM education, if you're familiar with that at all. So, it looks quite a bit different.
Not familiar with it, I don't necessarily agree with all of it, you know.
Yeah, no.
So, this is all coming down from state?
Yeah, yeah, brand-new science standards that don't necessarily match anything that we've done before, so this is different.
That's expensive for every district in the state.
Yes, it is.
What are the new science standards?
They rolled them out, the, this past summer, they trained science teachers at the state level in the, kind of the philosophical instructional differences with NGSS. Those teachers are now in districts starting to do that training and they are supposed to be fully implemented by next fall.
Oh, I see.
All right, any other questions on that? All right, Leslie, Robert Frost.
So, you all have a little handout about Robert Frost. So, an update on Robert Frost, we have about 414 students, our enrollment does ebb and flow a little bit, and you can see the breakdown. We do have two second graders because as I, my new term for our school is that we are a magnet special education school because we host all of the special education programs. So, we do have a couple of second graders and then about 134 third graders, 125 fourth graders, and 153 fifth graders. We have 70 students identified on IEPs, 10 students are in our SLP program, which is our behavior program, 14 students are in our basic skills program, and six students are in our functional skills program. We have 34 students who are English language learners and with all of that, our attendance rate is just under the 95%. And I will say, we're this close, we're gonna hit it.
You're doing really well.
We, we've had some illness actually running amok, as many of the schools have, so that's, we took a little dip. And then academically, you could, that's where kind of you see where our diverse population is impacting our school more. Our reading scores are lower than we would like, our third graders, 62% are reading at grade level, fourth grade 55%, and fifth grade 65%. So, reading, we're seeing as our weakness right now, and that's actually if you skip down the biggest challenge that we're facing, you all asked the principals to present about challenges. So, reading is a challenge that Robert Frost staff is facing and that's where we're spending a lot of our time and energy right now. Our leadership team has been pursuing information to learn about how to become better reading educators and they've been attending conferences, specifically, we attended a response to intervention conference about how to change our schedule so that we could deliver more reading instruction at different times during the day and how to integrate, Jennifer was talking about science, how to integrate science and social studies and teach readings while teaching those things as well. So, it's been 12 to 15 years since we adopted a reading curriculum and with, again, the standards changing, that's a major shift and so that's, that's our biggest challenge. Our goal this year, before we started working on reading though, we spent a lot of time last year working on math, and so we're starting to see our math scores go up. You can see that 65% of our third graders are at benchmark, 60% of our fourth graders and 67% of our fifth graders. So, we're continuing to focus on math and really dig into that curriculum and the Singapore strategies, which is what our district is using in the K8, K5 land. And we're also continuing to implement PBIS and we really believe in that system, it's really helped our rules and our behavior with our kiddos at school to teach them what our expectations are ahead of time and then reinforce that throughout the year. So, and there's our, some pictures from our assemblies of all of our wonderful students who work hard, who are always kind and who have pride in their school.
Thanks, any questions? All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Jamie McCarty, Evergreen and Victor Point.
Thank you for having me this evening. I'll slip that up. You as well have a little packet there, I always cut down some trees and have too much paper for you, so just tried to pick a couple of goals that both Evergreen and Victor Point are focusing on this year and trying to, you know, we could talk about goals and vision and school culture all night long and I know we got about five minutes, so.
You can take 10 or 15 if you want.
Okay. So, first goal, student learning is our number one priority and I wanted to just talk about both of these because I think that's why we show up every day, is getting kids on level, getting them reading, writing and math. And kind of wanted to just show some progress that we're doing as both staffs and data team meetings and, and we've really started to look at STAR assessments as a district and I know you guys as board looking at those monthly and tracking where we are, and we're trying to make those as relevant as possible. So, after every STAR assessment, our staff is getting together, K3, you know, at Evergreen we do it together because we're, we have four teachers and at Victor Point it looks a little different, so. So, Victor Point, K2, 3, 5 and 6, 8 meetings, Evergreen, we've been meeting as a school. The goal at each meeting is to review our STAR data, to look at every to look at every student, whether they're high, medium, low, below, and make sure that not a student, I don't care what they are, if they're achieving above level, at level, or below level, is not slipping. And how are we pushing them? How are we meeting them? And if they are below, how are we differentiating that instruction and thinking out of the box to create ways to make sure that that student achieves the highest level possible? So, that's the goal of our meetings. Just some example of some work that we did at our last meeting. So, just because STAR shows that a student is green or on level, doesn't mean they're gonna meet your state assessment, where the state says that every kid is on level. And so, it takes some data and some work to take a look at. A third grader, this is Evergreen, so we looked at every third grader, seven out of twelve were on track to meet that state assessment. That is fifty-eight percent. They need a scale score on that STAR at four fifty-five. And so, we track every student. Every teacher knows every student, where they are. And then we pull skills where that student is deficient. So, if they are deficient, what do they need? How do we teach them? How do we change our instruction? And where do we go from there? And so, that was an example of our next meeting and last meeting, of looking at those students and where do we go with them, and how do we keep teaching them, and showing what they can do by the end of the year. And so, forty-two of fifty-four, seventy-eight percent are on track to meet the S-PAC. And so, if you really look at the STAR and the green, we're about eighty-eight percent. But not eighty-eight percent is gonna meet what the state says. So, we have twelve students right now that aren't on track to meet. Evergreen, pathway to proficiency in math, kind of the similar thing. You can go down each grade level and kind of see the percentile, where they're at. And so, we have this broken down. So, every teacher has every student, and every score, and every piece of intervention, and then that discussion on each student. And so, that's kind of what those, take a look at. Victor Point, the same way.
Jamie, real quick.
Yeah.
Can you go back to that math?
Sure.
Why is there a deficiency there at fifth grade? They're doing really good, third, fourth, and then they drop. What's?
You know, that's just based on grade level and student. Whether we have a few more students that just aren't meeting that benchmark, and that class might be a little bit lower than the third and fourth. You know, sometimes you go through little pockets in your school. And that is on the last STAR test. So, that student might be proficient, and they might be showing that they're gonna pass that S-PAC, the test before, but it fluctuates quite a bit. So, that would fluctuate every time. And that's why we really look at that every time, because it might only be seven or eight, but that last showed us five. And so, yeah, that's one of our areas, so. Victor Point, same, all the way through, third through eighth. Seventy-eight percent are on track to pass the S-PAC in language arts. Thirty-one students are not on track. And we have a plan for each one of those students. And in math, seventy-five percent are on track. And that's what we built our school goals around, is kind of where they finish the year in both reading and math.
So, again, kind of go along with Herb was talking about, sixth grade there, see a dramatic drop, and then they come.
Yeah. You know, sixth grade at Victor Point is probably our lowest, just grade level, by far. Unbelievable kids, and they're hard, hard workers, incredible. And I want, I want you to know, that number means nothing other than the fact that that's what the state says. We believe in every one of those kids, and we're gonna get them there. But that is our lowest group as a whole. And we have the most aid time in that classroom right now, of our upper grades. And we're doing a lot of different things with those kiddos every day, for interventions and extra, just extra things that we're doing for them.
Just to make up for that.
Yeah. And I can't wait to show it to you at the end of the year.
Okay, good.
That's what's fun about data, is you can track that and see if you're making progress and.
Yep. And it's easy to set goals, but it's not always, you know, I think the hardest part is looking at the goal at the end, and did you make it or not, and why and why not? Because it's simple to set them, but are we setting them relevant, and are we achieving them? Our professional goal, the second goal I wanted to talk, just talk about was technology. And both staffs at Evergreen and Victor Point, every staff member has made it a professional goal to use technology in the classroom. And we focused on the Danielson rubric in areas 1E and 3C, which focus on instructional materials and resources, as well as student engagement. And I tried to, tried to show you on the next slide, just the technology that both schools have purchased within the last three years, two years. And again, it's one thing to have technology and spend money towards technology, but it's another thing to use it appropriately. And are we using it to engage students? And the biggest thing is, the hardest thing for a teacher to do is differentiate instruction, finding a child at their level and pushing them to their maximum potential. And so, we have a ton of middles, we have lows, and we have highs. And a lot of times, we teach just right to the middle, and our highs are bored, our lows are, it's over their head. And with technology, we can meet every kid every day. And so, it's, my first observation on every staff member is, how are you using technology to differentiate instruction in the classroom? And then as a staff, we're coming together at staff meetings and sharing what we're doing and how we're doing it. And we have learned so much together, it's incredible. I've learned, sixth through eighth, we barely use paper anymore, writing a paper, all on Google Docs, all edited by the teacher sitting right here, and thirty students, and watching every single kid type, and seeing it up on the screen, going, and talking, and stopping a kid right there. And hey, what, that intro sentence, you know, it is so amazing what we can do in the classroom. But that's just the commitment to technology. I kind of went down, two sixty-five inch flat screens, you can read through that, laptops. We're about one-to-one at Evergreen, and we're almost one-to-one at Victor Point with iPads and Chromebooks and laptops in front of kids, whenever they need it at any point during the day. Some Dog, just kind of a cool thing, number eight there, for Evergreen, Mrs. Miller's class, they all take part in the Some Dog. It's meeting kids at their level in math. It's a math, school-wide, that kids do in grade levels, but pretty neat. Mrs. Miller's class took first in the Some Dog competition for the Willamette region, and ninth of fourteen-hundred classrooms nationwide. And Evergreen as a whole took four out of the top five places in the mid-Willamette Valley in the Some Dog competition. So, talk about kids doing math, and these kids, every class you walk into, they can't wait to tell you, here's what I'm doing, here's how many I got right today, here's what I did at my level, I just passed every bit of this part of my proficiency. And you can just walk in and feel the excitement in the classroom.
How did, how did you get the kids motivated like that?
Teachers. They're incredible. They push them, they excite them, they get them pumped up, they have charts on walls, they have celebrations when each kid does something. It's amazing staff. So, and Victor Point, I kind of just put the three-year technology plan in the back of your packet. And it kind of shows, is it there? It's not there. Is it there? Yeah, it is there. Good, because it's not online. And just wanted you to kind of see the work that Victor Point's staff has done with just really looking, you know, a lot of times, we impulse, and we need, and we have to have now, and we, that group of teachers have worked together to put on hold needs of what they might need next year, and do this for this teacher. And yeah, you need this more than I need this. And of course, we want it all now, but it can't happen with our, with our budget. And so, they've put together a three-year tech plan, very methodical, very thoughtful, of last year, this year, next year, and the year after, almost a four-year. And in four years, they're gonna have everything they want, because of our PTC, because of their teamwork, and because of our commitment to technology. So, I just kind of wanted you to see the three-year plan. Our tech, Drew has been instrumental, just in that. And our tech crew helped us put that all together, come up with pricing, help us schematic it out for our school, so.
That's really good. I guess I would encourage you just to keep that going, though, because you'll never be done. You said you get, you'll get there, but there's gonna be needs out in the future. And just, just keep forecasting out four years. And that, I think that's good for everybody.
Technology will change. So, that's a working document, and we, our staff knows that. And we might have something that comes up that, hey, and so, then, at least we have a plan in place, hey, we're gonna pull from here and go from here. And so, that's that. And then just recent celebrations, I talked to you last time about the, we were trying to raise the money for the playground. Hopefully, you've driven by Evergreen and seen the beautiful new play. The parents, the community, the kids, what they did there, twenty-six thousand dollars in a month. Battle of the Books, both schools, Evergreen finished the highest any, any school in our district's finished in the regional competition, eighth place out of forty-two teams. And Victor Point was in the top eight as well. So, both schools just have a ten to be proud of. And then we had Reading Under the Stars, Taco Tuesday Scholastic Book Fair at Victor Point a couple of weeks ago, fed two-hundred-and-twenty members of families, and had them in for an hour, and rotated in classrooms, and lights off, and book characters of our staff dressed up, and read books to our students and parents for an hour. A pretty powerful night at our school. And our biggest hurdle we face is budget, just the unknown. We have a PE grant at Victor Point, and we're really hoping that without that grant, budget becomes a huge issue, because our kids get it finally every day. Evergreen, we have it worked out, but not a licensed PE teacher. So, how all that shakes out. But I think budget is the unknown, and probably our biggest hurdle we face. And just some pictures of our kiddos. That's a student in the fourth grade, reading a book on RASKSIDS. It's a program that we purchased that is right at their level. It'll ask them ten questions after, and it'll be sent right to the teacher. And the teacher will look at that and say, what level was that? You got six out of ten, you're reading at too high of a level, I need you to back off just a little bit. And that's a program that kids are just loving right now. That's our kindergarteners. We're one-to-one iPads at both Evergreen and at Victor Point. That's a small group instruction. Kids learning the ABCs. Two kids working on a Google Doc classroom project together on Chromebooks. Second graders lined up, working small group reading. You can see a couple laptops in the back there. They're having a lot of fun. Kids taking the STAR assessment in their classrooms. No need to go to labs anymore. Kids pop open a Chromebook, and we got it right there for them anytime. And that's Victor Point and Evergreen.
Great, thanks, Jamie. Any any questions or comments? We got a chili feed coming up Thursday, right?
Big chili, chili feed, yep.
What's the times again?
Uh, five-thirty. Doors will open. We have silent auction, and we got a bunch of new stuff going. But that's a big night for Victor Point and fundraiser, yeah.
That's your main fundraiser for the year, right?
Biggest fundraiser of the year for them, yeah.
Cool, thanks.
It's amazing seeing those kids using those computers at such a young age. People like, people like Tim and me weren't even typing until we got to high school, so.
High school? I didn't saw a computer.
Well, I saw a keyboard, though. Electric typewriter. Thanks, Jamie. You're doing a great job. Board reports. Anybody have a board report this evening?
I just got a couple of things.
Yeah.
I just wanted to take the time to kind of, we talked a little bit about, I think, Justin's last board report, and some of the other folks, too, about just the Silverton High School Theater Department did a fabulous job, again, with the production of Inherit the Wind. For those that have made it, I know some of you in the audience have heard it went. Mr. O and the Silver Mask Thespien Society, once again, knocked it out of the park in terms of an amazing performance of theater. So, if any of you don't go to those, make sure you do go out for one acts in the spring. They're, they're very, very, very well-done, very funny many times, and also very good in some of the dramatic performances, too. So, I encourage you to come out for that. I also want to just kind of reiterate what Jamie had mentioned about OBOP. Thanks to Leslie and to Jamie and all the other educators in our department. My daughter was involved in the third through fifth grade competition. We had the one on the twenty-first, where it got everybody ready at the Silverton High School Commons. And then I went to the competition two Saturdays later, so a couple of weeks ago, where, again, we had four teams out of forty-two that made the Sweet Sixteen. As, you know, since we're now in March Madness, I can say, hopefully, it's not copyrighted. So, Central Hal, Pratum, Victor Point, and Evergreen all made it to the Sweet Sixteen out of forty-two teams. And if any of you have been to an OBOP competition, it's pretty intense. I mean, it's, you get in the classroom, and they shut the doors, and they tell you don't touch your phones, and it's like, don't make a peep. I mean, it's parents, it's hard to sit on your hands, you know, and your kid's up there competing. So, it was really, really fun to see. And again, Victor Point and Evergreen made it to the lead eight. Evergreen lost to the defending champion from last year. I think that champion, Clear Lake from Kaiser, also went on and won the state competition. So, our teams did fabulously well. So, again, hats off to our educators in the district for getting them ready for the OBOP competition. But it was really a neat experience to see our kids competing at such a high level amongst a very big pool of competition. So, thanks.
Thanks, Erin. And I took advantage of the rainy weather, the never-ending rainy weather, visited some schools. With Scott Mills, first of all, I was interested how the large eighth-grade classroom was doing. I've heard some good things recently, and they had struggled in the beginning. When I went there, I found that it was very well-laid out, it was very well-organized, the kids were all engaged in learning. My first impression going to the school, though, locked in the office, and the door was wide open, and the heater was on, and wow, what's going on. Turned out, they'd had a flood in the, in the office, and they're just trying to get everything dried out. But the seismic upgrades that the site looked really good, it's really beneficial for the site. We've got some asphalt prepared to do, to do the heavy equipment that was around there. It may have to be done at some time. Kirsten mentioned last time, she'd like a play shed, so I've got a chance to go look, they're thinking about that. Maybe the parents come up, can get together and build, build a play shed. And she had some concerns about the small kindergarten class, but it looks like the numbers are looking healthy, so I think we're okay. Went and visited Mark Twain Elementary. I had heard some concerns about the pickup and drop-off time, and how that looked. So, I got there nice and early and watched, watched the cars come in. Again, it was very organized. They had a teacher out, or an aide out, out in meeting the cars, and helping kids get out of the car, and really keeping traffic moving really well. It was very, very well-organized. School was very organized, clean, and inviting. Issues around there, the new play area is very nice, but could use a wall to protect from the weather, because the weather can blow in, and kids can use some, something to play wall ball on. Bathroom still need little adjustments with the sink. Kindergartners have a hard time reaching some of the faucets and the sinks and whatnot. And there have some issues with the security cameras that they're dealing with. There's a little bit more fencing needed, needed over by the soccer field. Sometimes the kids get away, and they have to chase them down. So, it'd be better to have a little more fencing over there. So, some things, some of these things are already being worked on, and, but overall, look really good. Then I went to Silverton Middle School. I was concerned, heard some concerns about the passing times, some security around there. Again, kids were well-behaved, it's very organized, very, very orderly. As I was leaving, though, I found out a hundred kids were gone to a field trip. So, maybe that aided that. But again, it was, it was very, very well-done. Everything was smooth. It would be really nice to remove that old Slater Street building. That really, really limits the site there. They could use a playground space. The kids really aren't allowed anywhere around there. The logistics of the site are such that that, that building was gone, it would really help the movement of the site, people, and whatnot. Security fence was partially up when I went. That's all they did, get the gate in. So, it's all enclosed now. There's a few more security upgrades to be done over the summer. But looked real good. They're a little concerned about the large eighth-grade class coming in, but looks manageable and be good for the site.
Yeah, Wally, I too wanted to, I was just kind of reflecting a little bit over the weekend after, going to the, to watch the girls play in the state tournament last week down in Corvallis. Not, you know, not the girls, everybody knows they played awesome. They played their heart out, played really hard. But I'm, I'm also always impressed at these tournaments, at the amount of community from Silverton that comes, comes to those things. That really says a lot about this community. We outnumber every school that's there. And that, every school we play, we're outnumbered. And that was, that's really cool to see. Also, the kids from our, from Silverton, the stands were packed with kids, no issues. And there never are. And, you know, that's not by accident. That's who we are at Silverton High School. And that comes from good staff, and a good community comes from good staff who lay out the expectations of the kids, and the kids know, know what's expected of them. And it comes from good kids who want to meet those expectations. And I'm just always impressed by that. I've got a, you know, before, I got a couple of comments from some of the officials down there at Gill Coliseum, and on how well-behaved and how well our kids do. And so, I just wanted to, to kind of give a hats off to Silverton High School in general, because Silverton High School is a good place to be from. And, you know, that's not by accident either, because those kids don't just get to high school and become, you know, become good kids. And it comes from our, from all our other schools that, you know, that have those kids from K through eighth grade. And again, amazing staff who do wonderful things. A couple of things, I mean, Aaron talked about Battle of the Books, and how, how well we were represented there. I saw recently the Butte Creek Robotics Team made it, made it to nationals. And that's just, you know, that's awesome. And things, I know I'm, I know I'm missing, I'm missing a lot of things, but things like that are happening all over this district. And things, I know I'm, I know I'm miss, I'm missing a lot of things, but things like that are happening all over this district. And I know sometimes I get kind of bogged down in, you know, politics and all that kind of stuff, but, but it's really good for me to just reflect on what an awesome place this district is, what awesome staff we have, what a good job they're doing, what good kids we have. And so we should, I think we should all be proud.
Thanks Jamie, great comments. Anybody else? Okay, move on to our second audience with visitors, would, actually correspond, as I'm not aware of anything else, Andy?
No.
Okay, move on to second audience with visitors. Anybody else like to address the board this evening? All right. Seeing none, we have no action items, so at this time, we're going to go ahead and adjourn to executive session under ORS 192 to 6602F, to consider information on records that are exempt from law from public inspection, consider of sick leave bank request. And ORS 192 to 6602H, to consult with legal counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation, or litigation likely to be filed. So thanks for coming.